It's behind you. It's good to see everybody and have you here. Board, thanks for coming. We have a couple of absentees. Jan and Lucy won't be with us tonight. So don't leave me hanging, okay?
I think your mic's off.
Huh? Let's go with Heidi. And we'll review some policies, please.
Board President, Board.
You're on.
I'm not on. Are you to be on or?
There.
There we go. We have a number of policies to talk about tonight that we'll be introducing. Do I just have to talk them more closely?
You can push it down.
Push it down.
You can push it, the whole thing. No, the whole.
The whole.
Oh!
There we go. Sorry about that. A number of policies that the Policy Committee's been working on. We actually had our first meeting as a Policy Committee with a couple of members of the Board, which I thought was really productive. I appreciate Jan and Kelly for being there and helping us walk through some of the issues that we know that the Board is going to be concerned about. We didn't get through as many as we wanted to, which is probably a good thing for you all tonight. It's not.
I'll get batteries.
Okay. Now I'll talk into it and just let you know.
You can come up here.
Okay. We'll just start in, I think we've got these in numerical order. So starting with Policy 2110. This is just a second reading, so there's nothing new to this policy. This is a policy that requires, excuse me, this is about the state law that requires us to have a policy regarding SROs in our schools. So we'll be presenting that on second reading.
Right off the rail, Heidi, sorry to bother you.
Oh, you're good.
Any comments on any of them or any addition?
No.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We have not received any comments on any of these laws.
Thank you.
The second policy in your packet, 4145, is a revised policy. We combined a couple of policies and then are reviewing one. We used to have all of the requirements for birth certificates in a different policy, a shorter policy, with information about what immunizations we need to document and record. And we combined those into one policy. So the policy is titled "School Entrance Requirements: Birth Certificates and Immunizations." And this just outlines what the state law requires us to ask for as kids enroll in school, both in terms of birth certificate and immunizations. Not a lot. There we go. Is that better? Yeah, are you fine? I don't want to, I'll wait and tell you if I don't want to go on if you can't find what I'm talking about. Did you find it?
Yeah, we don't have hard copies, so I think it's in Board Book.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, it's in Board Book. Okay.
There is one copy, Jan, it's coming up, of one right here.
This policy, this policy didn't have any procedural processes that the Board needed to walk through or approve necessarily. It just outlines what the state requires in terms of providing proof of birth certificate and immunization records to enroll in schools in Utah. So that's Policy 4145. Are there any questions that I can answer about that policy? Okay, then I'll go on. The next policy we have is 4160, and that's our residency and enrollment policy. We brought this to the Board about six months ago when we were, again, combining some policies and adding some language. And it was brought to our attention by Board Member Larson that we have some inconsistencies with our policy and our practice regarding our dual-language immersion students specifically. So this policy addresses boundary exceptions. And if you, anyone who does have a copy wants to flip to?
Page 13.
Page 13. And the policy had at one time talked about students on boundary exceptions as one group, all students on a boundary exception, which would include our students who are enrolled in a dual-language immersion program at a school other than their neighborhood's school. And the question came up, do the same rules regarding boundary exceptions apply to our DLI students? And if a student is in a dual-language immersion program, say from kindergarten through fourth grade, and then decides not to be in that program anymore, does that student get to stay at that elementary school or would they have to go back to the neighborhood school? When that student transitions from elementary school to secondary school, we require all other students to apply for a boundary if it's not their neighborhood school. But where a student is engaged in the dual-language immersion program in elementary and then going to a high school that has classes and courses focusing on that language, would it be fair to make them apply for a boundary exception or allow them to continue? And so with Board Member Larson's help and Board Member Burrell's help, we were able to craft a policy that allows students who are in the dual-language immersion program to continue on that track through elementary, junior high, and high school without applying for a specific boundary exception. If a student does un-enroll from the dual-language immersion program at any time in elementary or junior high or high school, they would be allowed to remain at that school for that year, was it that year, Kelly? And then the next year, they would still be allowed to attend if there was room in the school, but it would have to be through a boundary exception.
And then, I was going to say, then the other thing addressed, to address was if the school drops the dual-language immersion program, then what happens to that? So those were concerns that were brought to me from parents. So I'm glad that we, I think we properly addressed it in this policy.
And to that, thanks, Kelly. To that end, in the event that the district does terminate a dual-language immersion program from an elementary school or junior high, the policy now states that the student would be allowed to remain enrolled in that school until the end of sixth grade if it was an elementary student or ninth grade if it was a junior high or high school. But at the end of those years, then they would be asked to apply, just like anyone else, as a boundary exception to the boundary school. There was one other change that was made just today that we didn't realize. And so I believe that it has been corrected in your Board Book materials as well. But the policy for years and years has stated that a student accepted on a boundary exception has to find their own transportation unless there's room on the bus. And that isn't happening, that hasn't been happening. Our Transportation Department is really trying to make sure that the students on the bus are those that are designated and living in those areas for the bus. So we made sure to delete that provision and simply state that a student accepted on a boundary exception is responsible for finding his own transportation.
Well, and I think both that section and the one about dual language are especially needful considering our new, our?
Boundary.
Our new boundaries. Our new boundaries, especially in the Weber High community. So this will specifically address those issues in that community, so, thank you.
Any questions about Policy 4160? Oh, I did have one question.
Yeah, this is fine. So I know that at the end, we eliminated the information where it was seven extracurricular competitive activities where you're talking about first entry. And it says it's addressed in Policy 4500, which is like, there's nothing much there. So is this, is that, are we just referring that to UHSAA rules?
No, Policy 4500 is under construction.
Okay, that was my question, because I like referred to that and then I was like, oh, there's really nothing here.
With the anticipation, though.
Perfect, that's kind of what I thought, thank you.
Yep. The next policy in your packet is Policy 5300, which was approved on second reading last month. But if you recall, I mentioned to a few of you that there were some concerns that were raised after the Board adopted the policy, and we wanted to make sure we got it right and address those concerns. Specifically, the concern that was raised was about what happens to confiscated contraband when an administrator finds it on a student, when an administrator does a search of a student and finds something that is not allowed in school. Our policy states that they could, the administrator, confiscate that item or turn it over to law enforcement. And we had an SRO who kindly and quickly pointed out that there are some things that must be turned over to law enforcement. Shouldn't be within the discretion of the administrator to decide to keep those things, like drugs or weapons. And so we changed that in, on page five and section five to make clear that there are certain items that are outlined in this paragraph that must be turned over to law enforcement. So we are asking the Board to approve 5300 with that slight amendment on a third reading, which is a little unusual, but we thought rather than bring it back through a first and a second reading so quickly after the second reading, a third reading would be appropriate. Does anyone have any questions that can address about 5300? And then the last two policies, well, the next policy, start over. Policy 6800 is a new policy that is required by state law. In 2022, the legislature passed Policy 302. We're a little bit behind in getting it into policy, but it is an educational language services that requires every district to have translation services for families where English is not their primary language and sometimes not even a language that is available in their home. And so oftentimes, teachers, administrators turn to students to ask them to interpret, and it's a big burden on students, especially very young students who are being asked to interpret sometimes very serious conversations for the grownups. And the law prohibits us from requiring students to act as interpreters, but allows a student to be an interpreter if the student and the parent are comfortable with that. But we do have interpreter services that we've been using for about a year now. Proprio is the vendor that we use and offers services in our other languages that can be utilized at a phone call. And our administrators have been trained, our Director of Equity is the one who's been heading that up and that program, and those services are housed in that department. Any questions or concerns about Policy 6800? Okay, the last policy is a policy we talked about last month, Policy 8400, Video Usage. If you recall, this policy addresses the use of movies in classrooms. Either a clip or an entire movie occasionally shown for entertainment purposes. And there was a question that was raised last month about whether or not we wanted to require parent consent when a teacher shows a movie for purposes of entertainment. And the Policy Review Committee, with the input of Board Member Larson and Board Member Burrell, suggested that we include a paragraph that says if you're in ninth grade and the teacher wants to show a full movie of a PG-13 movie, then we are going to require parent permission before that movie is shown. We also clarified that full movies shown for entertainment purposes should be rare occasions and should only be done with the permission of the administrator. That was the only change from last month on Policy 8400. And with that, we'd be presenting that for second reading. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Boundary Committee, Recommendations and Some Discussion, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Williams. Do you think this will ever end?
Hopefully tonight.
I'm with you.
Well, good evening, Board President and Board Superintendent. We have the proposals and recommendations again for the boundaries. Over the last month, on the secondary side of things, we've heard some feedback for the high school proposal number one, mainly from the Harrisville community. As we took that back to our Boundary Committee, it was not any new feedback. And that's one thing we wanted to emphasize, its feedback that we'd heard previously. It did not rise to the level where the committee felt there was a need for a change. And so the plan is still to make the recommendation for high school proposal one with the caveat of the 10th and 11th grade students given the opportunity to remain at their high school through graduation if they so choose. So that's for the high school. For the junior high proposal, we're looking at Proposal Two. This is the second proposal. Same type of situation as the high school. We did hear some feedback mainly from that community in West Haven that we talked about last time, right in this area of the map. That community took it back and discussed it. The Sandridge team took it back, discussed it. In parsing through all the information, it was still all information that had been previously discussed. There was nothing new there. And so both sets of those committees felt like there was not a need for a change. And so for the junior high side of things, we are still planning as a committee to recommend Proposal Two for the junior highs. Turn over to Mary Jo for the elementaries.
Yes.
Okay, there were a few new things that were brought to the attention of the District Committee in regards to the recommended proposal number three. There are a couple of clarifications I just want to make. The first one has to do with, in Proposal Three, the new boundary for Midland Elementary where it crosses over Midland Drive. I did verify with Transportation that they would bus students from across Midland Drive to Midland Elementary, right there, thank you. And then down on Municipal Elementary. This piece right here, where they sit below the tracks, there is a safe route walking over to get to Municipal, but we're in discussions with Transportation to find out if they're able to transport those students or not, and I don't have a final decision on that at this point, except to say at this time there is a safe walking route up to Municipal. So those were just two clarifications on some busing.
Mary Jo, does that west, excuse me, does that west still stay the same at 2775?
Just that one?
That west on that Municipal address on that rest, right there?
Right here.
Is that still 2775? Or does it go further?
Sorry, I'm just thinking. Something crazy.
Brockin' run, that bad boy.
Trans, transpeg will come up. So is it this one here?
Yes. Yes, that is 2775. Got it, work, thank you.
I know that that?
So that stayed the same?
That line is right, yes, nothing changed that way.
Okay.
It's right by the rail trail where the?
Yes.
That road goes. There were a couple of new concerns brought from Valley View Elementary. The concerns they had were that they're losing some, they're going to lose some students to North Park and some to Midland. The ones that come to Midland are from about 4,300 to 4,000. They were previously bused to Valley View, and now they'll be within the walking zone of Midland. And so there was some concern shared that the students would be walking, I think it was 1.3 or 1.4 miles to get to Midland. They also said that there was a possibility that since they live that far away, that some parents would be taking their students to Midland, and would that cause more congestion in the Midland parking lot. They did cite a couple of positives, though, that they no longer have to cross the tracks and that the Valley View enrollment would increase from 61% to 71%. So kind of some positives and some negatives that they shared with that. There was also at the District Boundee Meeting a concern shared by the Principal of Municipal Elementary that in Proposal Number Three, the enrollment at Municipal would decrease. And when we looked it up, it will be a minimal decrease from 76% to 72%, which equates to about 20 students. And then as you project out a couple more years, it drops a little bit more, but it wasn't significant. And as we talked with Roy City and their Planning Commission, they're predicting quite a bit of residential growth in Roy, and that would also increase the enrollment at Municipal. So those were the two new concerns that were brought to our attention after our last Board meeting. Do you have any questions on those that I could answer for you? Okay. There was some continued concerns regarding 5600 as a boundary and the safety. This is nothing new that we haven't talked about a number of times with you, and, but we wanted to bring to your attention that because of those concerns shared again, there was additional observations done, an analysis. We did pay attention to students walking to and from school. How did that work with the HAWK? How many parents were walking with the students? We did determine that it seems to be an organized system and a functional system. We do know that we will have the HAWK after the boundary, after the construction is done there, that there will be a crossing guard, and we know that they're also putting in a pedestrian bridge. One of the concerns on this one, too, was if the number of buses increase and the cars attempting to get into that Roy Elementary parking lot would be different in Proposal Two than in Proposal Three. There would be an increase in those buses and cars trying to go in there, which could cause some concern also. So with that being said, we're still going to recommend Proposal Three, related to elementary school delivery boundary adjustments, to the Board for approval for these reasons. They provide a balanced enrollment at our elementary schools. We've created contiguous school boundaries. However, we understand that the Board would like to take more time and to further study the variables at play. We're happy to bring a recommendation back for the Board's consideration at our next Board meeting. Knowing that the boundaries for the new elementary school are the same in all three proposals, so that boundary would be the same, it would just be some of these residual concerns with some of these domino effects from that, that new boundary. All right.
Board, one quick thing if I could add. I've asked these two great leaders here to propose each of those level adjustments, high school, junior high, elementary separately, so that you can have those kinds of considerations as we go through it in Board meeting, okay?
Okay, wonderful, thank you. We have some presentations. First one we would like to do is a proposed interlocal agreement with Roy City. Dr. Peterson. Yeah.
Yeah, we have two interlocal agreements related to CRAs tonight. One is of Roy City. It's referred to as 1900 Southeast Community CRA reinvestment. And we'll discuss that first. Just kind of the bare nuts and bolts. I, I'm a visual guy, so I made you a chart for your packet. So you can follow it along. The purpose of this is to stimulate capital investment and development in the 67 acres south of Riverdale Road between 1900 and West I-15. Yeah, send it out in the packet. But you don't have to, yes, in your packet. And then it's a 20-year length, which is longer than we'd like to go, and also 70% participation, which typically higher. But then what we, what our, what our base guidelines are, our guidelines aren't that, just guidelines, that we can consider each case on a case-by-case basis. The estimated annual tax amount would increase to the district $306,000 on top of the $271,000 we're beginning. And we, we're optimistic, we think this is a good project. And we have individuals from Roy City here, I think.
Yeah, Brody's right there.
Tell us about the project.
Thank you, Members of the Board. So I'm Rob Sand. I'm the owner of Urban and Main Consulting, which is an economic consulting firm in Utah. Then we have Brody Flynn here as well for Roy City. He's the Assistant City Manager to answer any questions. So thank you, Robert, for that. If you just want to flip to like the fourth page, I want to say, and I'll focus on that. So really, the reason why we created this project area is two events happened. Is there a click?
Rob, it's right there. He's coming up right now.
So this is kind of just some historical background that I think most of the Boards are aware, so we'll just get into the project. So this is the boundaries between Riverdale Road. And then as it goes south, it's almost to the Sunset border, but not away. So a lot of those old residential small parcels there is what's very south. And then it has the Wells Fargo and the Wendy's as well across of 1900. But over the last three or four years, two events kind of took place that had us create this project area. So the first one was the Roy Innovation Center, or the RIC, that's what it's called. So this is the headquarters of the Northrop Grumman's Nation One team that is supporting updating the nation's ground-based strategic deterrent program. It's a $13.3 billion contract. And with that contract, they need to hire 5,000 new STEM jobs, which is a lot of new employees in our area. These are high-paying. At first, a lot of them are annual, one-year contracts. So as these people come in, they're looking for a higher-end housing option, not necessarily a home, but something that has a lot of Class A amenities that maybe are found in Virginia and other areas they come from to live in. And that doesn't really exist in Weber County. And so the Woodbury Group, they identified this need. And with Roy having that close proximity to this GBSD, the RIC, they were like, hey, this is a great opportunity to create this gap in housing that we have. And then the second event that happened is Roy has spent the last few years looking at creating a more traditional downtown that's more identifiable and a place that people want to gather, live, work, and play in. And so this is kind of just a picture. Up there is the current downtown, so that's the dilly-dallys in that area. And then this is a rendering of the development that is going to happen in the next year or two, which is kind of what we've identified as that future downtown. So it's a big Class A apartment building. Right there on the ground floor, there'll be a bunch of retail or commercial. It's going to have a parking structure. And that's the big, the big impetus of why we're here is parking structures are very expensive. And while this is going to be a type of product that you find in downtown Salt Lake, the rents won't necessarily be that of downtown Salt Lake. So there's a little bit of a gap in the delta between the rents to make the project pencil and what they can get in financing. So that's kind of why we're here, is for those two main reasons. And then we think that that development is going to spur development throughout the whole entire 67 acres. Woodbury has had initial conversations with the city, where they've said that right there along I-15, where you have those storage units and the RV area, that down the road, that could be a great use to have office buildings that support what's going on at the Roy Innovation Center. And then commercial around those rooftops. So we anticipate that in the next 10 years, you're going to have a total of 847 units of multifamily residential. It should be noted that a lot of these units are two bedrooms, one bedrooms, and studios. So you're not going to have a lot of student impact, even though there will be a lot of more units. And then 311,000 square feet of commercial and 121,000 square feet of office. That commercial office could flip-flop as the market changes, but right now the office market's a little slower. But we anticipate about $500,000 of commercial or office in the area. So we think that happens over 10 years. Current base here is $49 million. We anticipate an additional $232 million over the life of the project area. And as mentioned before, we're looking for 20 years and 70%. And we do know that that's a little over what your typical ask is, well. But the reason why we have that is just, another thing that's unique about this project is it's true redevelopment, right? There's existing buildings everywhere. So many developers have to go in, you're going to have to raise current buildings, you're going to have to update and upgrade the infrastructure. And a lot of that is just a little more costly than it would be to have just a big greenfield, you go in and just put a development in. So that's the main reason why we're asking for a little bit higher than what your guideline is. You're currently getting $271,000 a year on it. And then you'll be getting an additional $306,000 a year as the 30%. And then you'll be sharing $715,000 a year with the redevelopment agency. This is just a pretty graph that kind of shows that breakdown. So the yellow is what you currently get, the green is what you'll retain, the gray is what you'll share. And then after the project ends in 2021, you'll capture all that dark green. And then this is the uses we have. So 87% will go towards the various activities to facilitate the development. There is a mandatory affordable housing requirement of 10%. I'm remaining with the Board to decide what we want to do with that. But one thing that we would be willing to do and have support of is supporting the schoolteachers. So making homes more affordable for them. That would be something we'd be willing to definitely do, is partner with you in that program. And then there is an annual admin fee that we would take to help administer ongoing admin of the project. And then this is that reason that we mentioned before. So we're showing about $36 million of parking structure costs, 7.2 million of current market constraints. And then we kind of have that TBD because we're not sure how much that building raising and land assemblage and various other costs of redevelopment will be. We think it'll be north of $10 million. So I definitely think you have about a $53 million extraordinary cost. And so we're looking to get about half of that. And then the other half will be paid for through private investment. So any questions? Sorry, I kind of flew through that with time.
I thought that was an excellent summary.
Excellent, very good. Excellent.
Thanks, Rob. So you'll be seeing that, Board, in the open session or the general session for your approval. A second project that we're going to present to you is the Chromalox. And we have Stephanie Russell from the county. There is no question she cannot answer. There is no question she cannot answer it.
That is true.
And this project is, once again, it's a 10-year. Currently, we are collecting about 75,000, well, 75,000. And the new annual collection will be 141,000 on top of that for a 10-year period. And so it's a 50% participation. It fits our guidelines to a T, it's, it's, it's very good. And Stephanie, why don't you walk us through what, what the project entails?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Board and Superintendent, for the opportunity to speak. The county is very excited about this project. I am the Economic Development Director, I manage the financial incentives for the county, as well as do all of the large-scale business recruitment and expansion projects in the county. And this is one of our expansion projects, and it's a really great company. They've been in the area since 1976, so they've been contributing to the tax base for a very long time. They currently operate a 184,000 square foot manufacturing facility. If you're not familiar with what they do, they provide highly efficient modular and scalable electric heating solutions for decarbonization of process heating, hot water, and steam generation systems. Say that twice.
Sure they do.
They are located in our Weaver Industrial Park, and they're looking to expand their facility. And the proposed expansion will be about 103, a little bit over 103,000 square foot, and that would be in value of about $43.5 million. So it's a very large expansion. When they first approached the county, they were still looking at other locations, so we felt it appropriate to offer them incentive, to incentivize them and assist them with some of their infrastructure needs for this project, so that they can come into the, stay in the county and expand in the county. They'd be creating approximately 155 jobs over a 10-year period. So we're really excited about this project, and like I said, they're looking at investing about $43 million into the overall project. There's some other pieces to that project, but we're, we're mainly looking at the, at the manufacturing infrastructure pieces for this incentive. So they're asking 10 years at 50%. Their baseline value currently is $14,996,992. And we would max this, we would cap this incentive at $1,333,000. So that kind of gives you guys an average on, your average yearly intake would be $163,410. And your total over the whole 15 years, you'll be participating for 10 years, but you'll, where the county will be participating at 70% for 15 years. So the 15-year period, you would receive approximately $2,451,153. So any questions or concerns? We've got our Chromalox team, local and national, on board, as well as their consultants, if you have any other questions you'd like to ask them directly.
I don't. I think we're good. We'll look forward to your presentation later.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So President, this also will be presented in a general board meeting for approval. And also just to emphasize that we don't get to this point without some back work. Our subcommittee of the board has reviewed these, we've worked with the both entities, to both the county and Roy City on these, to, to get them to, to be beneficial and a win-win. We don't want to get to this point without it being a win-win, and we're optimistic and excited about these projects.
I think they're both good projects. Thanks, Robert. Superintendent.
Great. Just got a little outline for you, Board, on the back of your agenda, about some positive things that are coming, and to give you an update on a couple of things. Firstly, last spring, I, I laid out kind of a timeline around the Weaver School District strategic planning that we've, we've undertaken. As you know, we're putting together an entirely new strategic plan for Weaver School District, and we, we're working right now on the mission and vision, we're, we're scaling through a lot of performance data by our students. And I'm, I'm hoping to have by November, maybe December, a really rough draft version of where we're headed that way. One of the things I'd, I'd like the board to know is that part of what we're going to ask the board to weigh in on as a district leadership team is to kind of come up with the, an imperative statement. You've heard of that term, a board imperative statement. That's a statement about what, what you would like us to be all about as a board in Weaver School District. So we'll be working a little bit on that in a study session coming up. I've also just got a couple of other items. We're planning in consult with President Whitson to, to do a little bit of training through USBE. Richard Stoll is, is going to come up in November, if we can find a date as a, as an entire body that we could get together for about an hour and a half and, and have a training around best practices. That is recommended at least every two to three years, and so Pam, Pam will be reaching out to each of you, we'll try to find a date that we can land on for that, okay? October is our Principals Month, National Principals Month, and I just wanted to let you know, if you wanted to reach out to the principals and the schools that you oversee, just to celebrate the great work that they do. Thanks for being at our teen center opening. That was an emotional night a few nights ago, as you know, those of you that went, and what a beautiful facility. We're going to have Emily Euler and the foundation update us next meeting on the next two teen centers that are planned, what those entail, at Bonneville and at Roy High School. And then lastly, in November, Matt Williams and Brock Mitchell will be kind of outlining for the board how we're going to determine student eligibility around athletics related to our new boundaries. We've gotten a lot of questions, you're probably getting a lot of questions on that. And so we've got a couple of plans, we're consulting with our high school principals right now, Utah High School Athletic Association, and we will have a couple of options and approaches to have you take a look at in terms of that for November's board study session. So I just wanted to let you know what's coming. Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks, Superintendent. Board, anything else that we need to chat about for a few minutes? If not, let's adjourn, let's meet back here about five minutes to six, so we can be settled and ready to go at six o'clock. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.